Good evening and welcome to Monday, October 2nd, 2023 City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be presented by Ken Truex, Elder at East Independence Church of Christ. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, I thank you for who you are and how you've blessed us. And we are honored, frankly, just blown away that you love us and want us to love you. I pray and I thank you for our country and the city that we live in. Father, tonight, I want to pray for the mayor and the council, for their deliberations and their discussions tonight. I pray for good working relationships amongst the council so that they can provide the best outcomes for us as a city. I pray for the city senior staff and for the city workers and volunteers who do so much for all of us as citizens of the City of Independence. I pray for those who will be coming before the council tonight, Father. I pray that they, that as they make their presentations and their, and the discussions that follow, that it will be done civilly and that their prepared thoughts and ideas can be communicated clearly. Father, I pray your special blessings on those that are struggling tonight, those that are grieving, those who have health issues, those who are struggling for other reasons. So I pray your special blessings on them tonight, Father. And Lord, I ask all your blessings on these, so in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
McCandless?
Here.
Steinmeyer?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here. Thank you.
This brings us to citizens' requests. Our first request is from Colleen Huff. And please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Colleen Huff. I live at 717 South Willis Avenue. The reason why I'm here tonight is somebody sent me a podcast that was hosted by one of our council members and someone who sits on the Planning Commission. I was very appalled at what I heard during this exchange, and the topic was over the proposed Inglewood Arts Overlay District, which has completely been taken off the Planning Commission's agenda indefinitely because the residents that are affected weren't even notified. In this exchange, our council member told the person on the Planning Commission that if the residents don't agree, that she might need to get up in their face. He also questioned the residents' Christianity if they didn't go along with the proposal. Neither one of these city leaders lived in District 1, and this is the affected district. And I know firsthand, as a resident who stays on top, or on top of the topics going on in District 1, that none of the residents are even aware of this proposal. So during this exchange, the council member suggested that the people who didn't go along with this were just being difficult. And I can assure you that most of the people in my district want the best for their community, and they're not being difficult. They just are not informed about it. There was a public hearing, but no one received a notification. And at the same time, this was during the school tax levy issue, and I received four postcards about the tax levy issue, but nothing about the Inglewood Arts Overlay proposal. I feel like this council member was using bullying tactics, and ultimately, he said this project will go through. This was also surprising to me when it was voted down six to one, and I'm sure you can guess who the one who was in favor of it. It was the same person who co-hosts this podcast. I feel like our city leaders need to be accountable to the people. And using bullying tactics and other patronizing tactics and questioning their faith is not the way to go about gaining support for any proposal. This conduct is unacceptable, and I feel like the people in my district who are innocent and didn't even know anything about this proposal, an apology, and I feel like this behavior shouldn't, should not be tolerated by any city leader, especially in his capacity. And as far as the Inglewood Arts Overlay project goes, I think if the people are informed about it and they can decide what they want for their community, that is the only way to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mayor Eileen Ware. Please proceed forward, Mayor, and please state your address.
Good evening. My name is Eileen Ware. I reside at 3600 Blue Ridge Boulevard, Independence, Missouri. I was here a couple weeks ago at your study session and had the opportunity to talk to you about the reinstatement of the Independence Arts Commission, have a nice dialogue, I believe, about the benefit of having a local arts agency representing the City of Independence. So I won't go back into all of the detail that we, that was shared at that previous study session a few weeks ago. I just wanted to come back and thank you for your consideration and putting this forward on the agenda for the council to vote on this evening and continue to express my support for the reinstatement of the Independence Arts Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Cindy McLean.
Good evening. I like that the microphone is at my height. Appreciate that. My name is Cindy McLean. I'm at 510 North Delaware, Independence, Missouri. I also am here to ask for, and thank you for considering support for reinstating the commission. I think it's very important. I was luckily, lucky enough to be on it and have gotten to go on several city field trips where we've seen other cities who have very active 1% programs and, more importantly, very active arts commissions or councils. And the ROI, the return on investment, is huge in cities that consider the arts and incorporate them into their cities for just the, even the civic well-being, the pride of a city. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Lee Phillips. Lee, come on up.
Good evening. Lee Phillips, 1423 South Maywood Avenue. I rise tonight to rebut some comments that were made about a certain political action committee, or PAC, through a local podcast that is co-hosted by a current Planning Commissioner and a current council member. It was alleged that the PAC was started as a retaliatory entity by one person or one neighborhood because they are unhappy about an Airbnb approval. This is untrue. Let me be very clear. The PAC was not created to retaliate against anything. Our mission is to elect a new generation of quality leaders with independence values at heart. We are highly concerned that this council wants to sell our city parcel by parcel to investor groups. Yes. We are concerned with the upzoning and mixed-use proposals. We are concerned that the only idea floating around is that building auxiliary dwelling units or making every home into an Airbnb will solve the problem of affordable housing and income for the city. Airbnbs cost more money per month than a rental unit that's cared for, and every time you approve another home as an Airbnb, that's another home taken off the market for a potential long-term citizen. We would rather have the focus beyond accessing, on access to funding for serious reinvestments by homeowners for restoration. We have suggested this before. All this city is offering currently is upzoning and mixed-use proposals, rather than true investment in our communities such as improvement districts where the citizens are asked permission and have skin in the game, a policy that brings us to common goals with hard work and a reinvestment strategy in place for the communities. We feel that all of this is being forced on us without our permission. How about some serious talks about the way to make funding easier and more accessible to homeowners so that we can work together to restore this city to its former glory? We are concerned with high utility costs and rising crime. There's trash in this city, dilapidated homes in need of repair or rebuilding, homeless camps, rising drug use, and the gross lack of recovery facilities. We are concerned with the lack of common sense policies that this council puts forward, and after the last few meetings and planning sessions, it's obvious that this council doesn't even talk to each other to govern. A diverse group of concerned citizens throughout the city came together. The collective result is a grassroots movement in action. If this council won't stand for or listen to it, citizens, we will actively search for those who will. This is our right and our responsibility. Citizens from all political persuasions and situations have joined us because we are all affected by the decisions made by this council. To repeat, the allegation that the PAC was created as retaliation, as retaliation by a single person in a neighborhood for a single Airbnb approval is absolutely false. Although sparked by a single incident, the PAC was born from a multitude of concerns that were presented by many people and many neighborhoods. It seems to a lot of people that this council is ignoring the will of the people, and it's being expressed throughout the city. The people are being ignored, and we came together to make our voices heard. The birth of a grassroots PAC that is in action must have hit a nerve, and there are hundreds of us. The PAC was established to be a vehicle to bring community concerns to your attention. In conclusion, if this particular podcast wants to spew untruths and give opinions as facts, then a diverse group of concerned citizens will absolutely stand up and tell the truth about what is really happening. It appears that selling us out to other cities or investor groups is the only thing keeping this council together. We deserve better. We have an opportunity to make a change, and you can bet your bottom dollar that we will take advantage of it. You work for us, and we will hold the line to hold you accountable in 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Okay. That brings us to our I-STAR presentation.
23-780, a resolution recognizing Sergeant Matt Purdue with the Police Department as the I-STAR award recipient for October 2023.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion in the council? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes.
And I want to congratulate and honor Sergeant Matt Purdue as the I-STAR recipient this month. And this is a specific example of why Matt is being recognized, and I think it's a great example of that. There was a homeless camp of four people, and they needed and wanted help in a park. Captain Purdue, excuse me, Sergeant Purdue, sent a text out and wanted to see if he could find help for the family. After he met with the family and used all of his resources to get them help, to no avail on a Friday evening, he actually opened his own wallet, thank you for doing that, and actually gave them money for a room for the night. His supervisor said, "I've been dealing with homeless issues in the city for a long time, and this touched my heart that Matt did this." So with that, Matt, we are proud to give you the I-STAR recognition for this month, and thank you for the work that you do for our city. So come on forward, Matt, please. And next, we have four proclamations. So with that, I'm actually going to start it from here, and I'll stay down here at the corner to get this done while our city clerk reads the proclamations. But the first one is for Public Power Week. So Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Whereas we, the citizens of Independence, place a high value on local choice over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, not-for-profit electric utility, and as customers and owners of our electric utility have a direct say in utility operations and policies. And whereas independent power and light provide our homes, businesses, schools, and social service, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and safe electricity employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Independence Power and Light will continue to work to bring low-cost, safe, reliable, and environmentally friendly electricity to community homes and businesses, just as it has since 1901, the year that the utility was created, to serve all the citizens of Independence. Be it further resolved that the week of October 1st through the 7th be designated Public Power Week to recognize the people behind Public Power and Independence Power and Light for their contribution to the community and to educate customer, owners, policymakers, and employees on the benefit of the public power.
Thank you very much. And receiving the proclamation this week for IPL is Paul Biesmeyer. So Paul, please come forward and receive the proclamation, please. And next, we have the proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, and with all of your permission, I can, I'll stand here, so I might go back up and down my foot, please. So. Oh, thank you. So the next is Fire Prevention Week, and Battalion Chief John Dixon will receive that. But John, just wait just a second, and we'll have the proclamation read.
Whereas the City of Independence is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally in homes or the locations where people are at their greatest risk from fire. Whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week campaign, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, works to educate everyone about simple but important actions they can take to keep themselves and those around them safe when cooking. Now, comma, therefore, Mayor Rowland does hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week.
And let's give a round of applause for Battalion Chief John Dixon. Next, we'll have Melody Scott. She's with Job One, celebrating National Disability Employment Awareness Month, I believe. So, oh, sorry. With Job One. Okay. Please proceed.
Whereas October is recognized nationally as National Disability Employment Awareness Month to commemorate the many and varied contributions of people with disabilities to America's workplace and economy. Whereas during the month of October, Job One encourages our people to reflect on the importance of ensuring that people with disabilities have full access to employment and community involvement. Together, we can make a difference for people with disabilities. Now, comma, therefore, Mayor Rowland hereby proclaims the week of October 1st through 7th, 2023, Job One Week.
Okay. And is Melody Scott here? Thank you, Melody. And let's give it up for Melody.
And I have admission. I'm a big fan of Job One. My youngest has Down syndrome, and they help a lot of folks with Down syndrome and disabilities.
Next, we have National Disabilities Employment Awareness Month, and please proceed.
Whereas National Employment Disability Awareness Month is celebrated annually throughout the month of October, both locally and nationally, to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of America's workers with disabilities. Whereas the Office of Disability Employment Policy has selected the 2023 theme to be advancing access and equity, then, now, and next, to recognize the importance of ensuring all people have equal opportunity to contribute their skills and talents. Whereas community organizations like Job One and Community Service League are focused on providing employment supports to adults with disabilities in our community and help those adults find dignity and purpose in their life by attaining meaningful, meaningful work. Therefore, Mayor Rowland does proclaim the month of October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month.
And receiving the proclamation is Doug Cowan with CSL. So.
Yes, this is Diana E. Frye, who is our Vice President. Employment Services oversees our vocational rehabilitation program. Dana Davis is our Assistant Vice President and already is one of our career coaches, our job coaches. Thank you. Congratulations for the award, Diana. Let's give it up. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Do we have a second? We've got a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Is, does anyone want to pull any items out for individual consideration? Does anyone want to pull any items out for separate consideration on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda is approved seven to zero.
This brings us to our regular agenda. We have a public hearing here, and this is a new information-only public hearing.
A public hearing on the application by Jimmy, sorry, Mahak Kornis, requesting a rezoning from 01 Office Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial for the property located at 625 West 23rd Street South.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was heard by Planning Commission on August 22nd of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is for a property at the corner of 23rd Street in Delaware. Currently zoned 01 Office Residential, the applicant wishes to have it rezoned to C1 Neighborhood Commercial for the purpose of operating a small Latin American grocery store. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you very much. Okay. Could you read the second reading, please?
23-088, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District 01 Office Residential to District C1 Neighborhood Commercial for the property located at 625 West 23rd Street in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
That'll close the meeting, but there still is room for discussion from the council. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 23-088.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 23-088 passes seven to zero.
This takes us to another public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
A public hearing for the application by Carla Ramos, requesting a rezoning from C2 General Commercial and R6 Single Family Residential to C2 PUD General Commercial Plan Unit Development and approving a preliminary development plan for the property located at 15621 East 24 Highway. New information only.
Thank you again. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on June 27th of this year. Planning Commission's vote was in favor of this rezoning. This is a property located north of the city, along 24 Highway, west of 291. The applicant is requesting that the property mostly C2, there is some R6, be zoned C2 PUD for the purpose of opening a new office strip center on the front with a landscape business on the rear. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And we'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
23-089, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District C2 PUD General Commercial Plan Unit Development and approving a preliminary development plan for the properties at 15621 East US 24 Highway in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 23-089.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 23-089 passes seven to zero.
This brings us to non-ordinance items. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
23-782, a resolution establishing the Independence Arts Council, requested by Council Member Mike Steinmeyer.
Thank you. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Ray?
Councilmember, please proceed.
Thank you. I know that there was a robust discussion, and people presented lots of testimony on the importance of an arts council, and I know that there's an important role for the arts in Independence, certainly an economic driver, and a way to create connection between people as the Inglewood Arts Center has done, and a way to enhance community beautification and pride as the increasing presence of art in the square has done. But on June 20th, 2023, the council unanimously approved Resolution 6937 to bring forward a recommendation to the council on examining the purpose and scope of the 35 existing committees. And so I am requesting a delay on this vote until staff can inform us on how this will be incorporated into the previously given direction by that passed resolution.
Any further discussion?
Get the motion one second.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to postpone this. Any further discussion on No further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to postpone this for a staff recommendation, if I'm hearing it correctly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
No.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
No, and the motion fails two to five.
That brings us back to the main item. Any further discussion on the main item? Seeing no further discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'm finding myself in a difficult position because I certainly agree that the arts are important in our community, and it's important to, for all the reasons that Council Member McCandless just shared, that it's important to have those and to, to have a collective way to manage those in our community. I'm frustrated by the fact that as a body, we continue to undo what we've already done, which is to ask the which is to ask the city manager to look at all of the boards and commissions and make recommendations for all of those. It just seems like it's not a proper way to govern. I mean, in fact, we did a action plan back in February, and we've voted, you know, to set aside pieces of that, or actually just to kind of preempt pieces of that. We did that just a couple of weeks ago. We voted to, and if we vote this in favor of this tonight, we'll be, you know, basically undoing what we already asked staff to do unanimously back on June 20. So I want to go on record that I'm not against the arts, and I'm not, and in fact, I'm in favor of the arts, but I will be voting no because I don't think we're handling this correctly.
Thank you, councilmember. Anyone with a further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
You know, I appreciate your comments of my colleague. I look out in the chambers, and I see former colleagues. I see a young man that served on the, that helped write the charter, one of the few surviving members. And I can tell you, things change. Sometimes they change from week to week, and you don't always get things the way you want, and they don't always make sense in local politics, or any politics, or frankly, in this city. And that's simply sometimes how things are. Our deputy city manager has worked in a number of cities in all kinds of different sizes. So has our city councillor. That's just how things go sometimes, and when sometimes the citizens come forward and tell you that something is really important to them, and it's important to do now, sometimes you change what you thought was a good idea. And sometimes you think about that, and even though it seems to undo something you did before, or you changed something midstream, sometimes you do that. And sometimes maybe it changes later or it doesn't. You never know. But that sort of is how local government is supposed to work from time to time. And in this case, I believe that's how this is going to work. So I will be voting for this resolution.
Please proceed.
I'm hoping that we will still consider how this piece fits into the whole when you bring your recommendation forward, so that we don't duplicate or split responsibilities between competing committees, so that we are thoughtful and reasoned in our governance, which is the direction that the previous resolution gave you. I think just for consistency with that resolution, I'm going to vote no, more out of process than content. I certainly appreciate us having art as a consideration, and I know that that will be something that passes, but just for consistency on process and good governance, it seems that that is the most consistent way for me to vote. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
No.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and twenty-three seven eighty-two passes five to two. That takes us to second readings. Madam City Clerk, please read twenty-three zero eight-seven, please.
An ordinance approving a completion timing agreement with respect to the Cargo Largo Project.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Any discussion on this item? Seeing no call for discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for twenty-three zero eight-seven, please.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, twenty-three zero eight-seven passes seven to zero. Madam City Clerk, please read twenty-three zero forty-two.
An ordinance approving a redevelopment project for the Hub Drive Tax Increment Financing Development Plan and Initiating Tax Increment Financing Therein.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Since this is involving a tax increment financing in this, could we just ask the deputy city manager to just give us a, just a real brief overview of what this involves and our obligations?
Please proceed.
Sure. So this is held over from a previous council meeting, so we are starting the redevelopment district now, so we waited a little bit on this. So probably to cut to the punchline, there is no obligation. This does not obligate the city in any way to support this project. We are simply someone who collects funds and then distributes those funds towards eligible project expenses.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
If I may address the deputy city manager.
Please proceed.
Just for very, very, very specific clarification, Mr. Norris, if for some reason the development would fail, the city is not on the hook for any dollars that are included in this TIF.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion? Seeing no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three zero forty-two.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and this passes, twenty-three zero forty-two passes seven to zero. And this takes us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-three zero nine zero, an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to provide financial assistance for the Maternal Child Health Services Grant Program for the period of October 1, 2023, through September 30, 2024, accepting funds for the period in the amounts of $57,397.68, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or extensions for the same project, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Twenty-three dash zero nine one, an ordinance amending Section 11.12.004 Emergency Powers of the Mayor of the Independent City Code requested by Councilmember Mike Steinmeyer. Twenty-three dash zero nine two, an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to provide financial assistance for the Local Public Health Agency Infrastructure Grant Program for the period of October 1, 2023, through November 30, 2027, accepting funds for the period in the amount of $333,687, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions for the same project, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Twenty-three dash zero nine three, an ordinance approving the issuance of tax increment and special districts review bonds, revenue bonds, Hub Drive Development Project Series 2023 in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $16 million by the industrial development authority of the City of Independence, Missouri, and authorizing certain other actions and documents in connection therewith.
Thank you very much. And this brings us to councilmember comments. Councilmember Stewart, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things. So there's going to be an event this Friday. It's going to be October the 6th from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. It's a Faith in Blue event. It's going to be at 19310 East 50th Terrace South here in Independence, which is the Epic KC, Epic Center KC. It's going to be a discussion on, I'm trying, I'm trying to pull up my notes here. Yeah, it's hosted by the Independence Police Department, the Blue Springs Police Department, the Truman Heritage Habitat for Humanity and the Epic Church of KC. It's going to be where local law enforcement members and the faith-based community unite for a crucial conversation on mental health. And once again, that's this Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. And then another thing I wanted to mention is something I've been very passionate about and a huge proponent of. We're going to be getting body cams here in the City of Independence, and, you know, since I came on the council in 2020, this is something I've wanted to see go into effect. So, Mr. Deputy City Manager, I just had some questions about this. Hopefully you are prepared to answer. How did this come about? Can we give an overview of the financials? When will we start seeing the implementation? And then after we get everything done and over implemented, how will we fund, you know, the after? That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. So you had three questions there. How did this come about? So through a partnership with the Independence Police Foundation and the Independence Police Department, we applied for and successfully received a grant from the Department of Justice. The grant was $400,000, and then the city was obligated to match that $400,000. So we have $800,000 in total to implement 200 body cameras, and that should cover all the necessary personnel we need, and then a few extras on an as-needed basis. Your other question was about how we sustain this going forward, correct? Sure.
When will the implementation start, and how will we sustain it going forward?
Sure. The implementation will begin in 2024. And then how we sustain this will be much like we sustain or plan for any other program in the city. We are starting to develop forecasts. Right now, we forecast in the general fund only, if we do a five-year forecast. We're going to start doing that with all our sales tax funds, including public safety sales tax and the marijuana sales tax. So much like we do any of our programs, we're implementing our priority-based budgeting, so this will be, we'll use our forecasts and our priority-based budgeting process and prioritize these and develop a plan for how these would be sustained going forward.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to publicly thank anybody, any member of your staff, any member that was involved with the Independence Police Foundation. This is a good step forward for Independence. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Request, couple of dates, and then maybe perhaps a little refresher of what we are doing in our neighborhoods. If you don't mind, Mr. City Manager, Deputy City Manager, St. Mary's High School. It's, to my understanding, that has been sold and moved into different hands, now ownership hands. I've had the pleasure of talking to Jody with the Economic Development Partnership, and we had discussed a little bit about this. So my ask is, can staff assist with our Economic Development Partnership to find out exactly who owns that, what their intentions are with that? Because we do have a local group here who is interested in moving a discussion forward to help develop that, that I think would bring relief to the neighborhoods with a dilapidated building, some stability there. And then three, can we, three, four, wherever I'm at, can we add into some next steps? If we are not successful with conversations or movement, what are the next steps that we need to do to, that building has been delinquent and barren for quite a while? What are the steps we need to do to get aggressive, maybe similar to what we did with Kmart on Nolan Road? That's all I have on that one. Thank you. So 24 Highway, we are moving forward with the CID there. I want to let my colleagues, the councilmembers here, know that we are formalizing the map within, hopefully, within a month or so. We should conclude that, have a product to come to the city council for consideration so we can set up the boundaries for that, and that neighborhood, or that community improvement district will be able to take in more funds to help supplement the $35 million of investment, $30 million of investment we're doing there. So hopefully for the next 60 days, we'll have something to look at. The neighborhoods that was alluded to that we need to stay focused on, I would like to refresh, and somehow this was still in my, good timing was still in my little notebook here, that two weeks ago, the city council approved a $5.5 million federal funding grant from Mid-America Regional Council. The purpose of this grant, these improvements will connect residents, commuters from US 24 Highway, past Van Horn High School, and Truman Road, and terminate the star of the Inglewood Arts District near Hedges. As part of the complete street project, the intersection of Winter Road and Truman Road specifically, will undergo improvements to improve alignment and to provide better sidewalks, pedestrian connectivity for the students of Van Horn High School and for the public transit areas and the uses. This existing intersection has been unconvinced on a line which has negatively impacted pedestrians and vehicle flow. We've had a study sitting on the shelf that has been put into the downtown redevelopment. This funds this. This is another checkmark that we can do, that we have done. So a big thank you to the council for approving that $5.5 million grant. Big thank you to our staff, municipal services. I see Mr. Jackson over there. You look very dapper in a tie. I don't see that very often, sir. So a big thank you to our engineer teams and municipal services that chased this stuff down. So thank you. Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Fears?
Just one comment, and that is that last Monday, we held a strategic planning meeting with the Chamber and other, there are a number of other residents available or present at that event. Primary topic of discussion was the potential of a GO bond for our community. Just want to thank the Chamber residents, or Chamber and residents for attending that, and certainly want to, you know, lift up that we are looking for feedback from our community for the things. You would probably, some of you would at least have seen the article in the Examiner that talked about the, that particular potential. And while we have lots and lots of fine tuning to do between now and whenever it gets voted on, the information gathering process has begun, and so we are interested in hearing from our community. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Steinmeyer?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I took some time and went down to the UAW rally. It's a big discussion nationwide, looking at labor and wages. Workers are battling to stay ahead of inflationary costs, and I was amazed at how many people showed up for the rally, and, you know, labor, the unions are very important in this city. Many of them sit right here in the downtown area, and I hope, I hope everyone's paying attention to it. I think it's an important moment in our history that will help define how families are going to be cared for moving forward. And so I just want labor to know, unions to know, that I stand with you in that battle, and we pray for our nation and the families that go to work every day and work hard, and that they're able to have strong wages and benefits, and that can take care of their families, so that their kids have an opportunity to go to college and be able to do the things that we want as families. So when you hear about it on the news, just remember that labor and these unions are very important in this city, and a lot of families are dependent upon those jobs, those good-paying jobs. That's all. Mayor, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Steinmeyer. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a special thanks to Community Services League and Job One for making opportunities for people of many different abilities. And while they were here, I don't know that they gave a full representation of the people that they're able to get into employment and support during that transition. They've done just wonderful work, so want to say thank you to them. You may have heard on the news that the First Lady Jill Biden was in town, and...
the news that the First Lady Jill Biden was in town and I just was very pleased that she recognized the importance of teachers and some of our students and teachers from William Crissman got to meet with her and go on a tour of the White House Decision Center at the Truman Library. So very good national recognition for the City of Independence. The last thing, I'm sorry, I have two things. I know that this body has considered an ethics document and we've had a couple of study sessions and made recommendations on that. While we have not finalized that, I think it might be wise to send that to the Charter Commission only so that they can look and be sure that we aren't in opposition in any of their decisions and our decisions. I don't expect them to go through and fine tune that document, but I'd hate to find out afterwards that there were things that they had considered in the charter resolution that were in contraversion to the ethics document. And my final thing is that I'm going to be representing the City of Independence in San Antonio for two days in partnership with the Kansas City Chamber and looking at some of the things that we can learn from that city, especially around the lines of how they are working to reduce homelessness and improve their city in lots of ways that we have the opportunity to perhaps borrow some of their great ideas. So I look forward to bringing those ideas back to the City of Independence. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember McCandless. Councilmember Hobart, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things to throw out there, if Mr. Norris doesn't mind. Mr. Scannell, please pass along my sincere thanks to your staff. They have done, gone above and beyond in the 4th District lately, for the last several months, of course. But lately especially, we have an incredibly troublesome house there that has taken a great deal of time. And your staff has dedicated significant effort toward that. And I, I and the residents very, very, very much appreciate that. Along those lines, Deputy Chief Sumstead, please also let your staff and the folks at IPD know that I also very much appreciate that, also on behalf of not just myself, but the residents of the 4th District. Pass that. For the folks that have complaints about me, I'm fairly easy to find and get ahold of. Happy to sit down and talk about anything you'd like. So feel free. God knows I've apologized more than once for things that I've said or talked about, whatever you'd like to. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hobart. Just a couple of things here. The mayor's trash pickup will be on the 14th, location to be determined. Also, I want to give a big shout out to our police officers. Deputy Chief Sumstead, I just want to say what an outstanding job they've done. If I can just tell a real quick story, and I won't share any of the names, but I had a friend of mine who collapsed in a park and your officers were there, gave them CPR, basically brought my friend back to life. And without the work that your team does and that you do, and I just, I just want to say thank you because those are the kinds of things that your folks do every day, your officers do every day, representing our city. And I just want to say a personal thank you for saving a friend of mine's life. So thank you very much for that. With that, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Oh, Mr. City Man, please forgive me. All right. Yes, yes, yes.
All right. Just, just real quick announcement. So our website, we've been working on for quite some time. The transition will occur tomorrow evening to the new website. We're very excited about this. Our team, lots of employees have been involved with making this happen and working very hard. And we've probably prematurely aged many of them at this point. But want to give a shout out to those employees that have helped along the way here, particularly in the communications and tech services team. Like any new implementation, you know, there'll be some hiccups and bugs along the way. Be patient with us, let us know, and we'll work diligently to fix those. But we're very excited and I think this is a great step forward for us. It's one of our key faces to the city and how people interact with us. So this is an important step for us. Thanks.
Excellent, excellent work. And I'm hearing good things about it, so I'm looking forward to it when it comes live and clicking around. So thank you very much. And with that, we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.